Okay, good evening. It's 5:30 and I'd like to call the order this regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council and welcome everyone here this evening. We'll start out to and see if there are any general citizen discussion items. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This evening we've got Jerry Lee here and Mark Littleton from the Ereth County Appraisal District to present an annual report. So, gentlemen?
Good afternoon. Well, I guess the last several years, my report up here has been kind of boring. It's not been much to report and there's really not much to go on this year. There's not a whole lot that's happened and not a whole lot that I foresee happening. However, there are little signs out there that things may be picking up, especially over in the big cities and I know we, we kind of drag, lag behind before we pick up when they do. So, maybe we'll be, begin to see a little bit of that here later on this year and it may reflect it in some of the, some of the sales that later on down the road. But right now, we're not seeing very much. What's selling is not very, not a whole lot. However, I say all of that, I've got some numbers for the differences between 2011 and 2012 values that the city received. And you had a little over eight, $118 million in market value increase. And of that, there were about $45 million in improvements and $281,000 in land improvements. And that's probably mostly from things going from ag to out of ag or, you know, that kind of stuff because land's there and other than the fact that we, it may have been subdivided or changed categories or something and it went from maybe residential property to commercial property or something like that. The land had a value on it, it just changed for some reason or another. And then the bulk of it, which kind of reflects our economy really, was an increase in personal property of $72.5 million. Well, when things aren't going so well, inventories tend to build up and I think that's what you're seeing. Now, the bulk of that, was part of that was, the biggest part of it was FMC, $40 million there. With them, that's because they're doing really well. Oil and gas has been really nice to them and everything's going their way. The other was Tejas Tubular, which had a $21 million increase. And the big thing that was really there was Tejas Tubular used to kind of consign a lot of their inventory onto their place that really wasn't theirs and other people were paying the taxes on it. Tejas has gone to where everything there is theirs now. And so, there was a pretty good increase in their personal property inventory out there. Your abatements dropped from 67,000 to zero. Pollution control was up $343,000. That's primarily Alsup's. Freeport increased about $34,000, which you would expect with increases in inventory at FMC and Tejas and anybody else that has an inventory that claims Freeport. Which leads us down to a bottom line that your taxable value up, went up about $51 million for 2012. For the, for next year, right now, I don't see, I mean, we've got a little bit of building going on here and there, you know, a little residential here. I don't see anything great. Right now, I don't see anything in the market that would tell me that values are going to increase by any significant amount. So, I'm afraid today, I'm looking at kind of more of the same. Questions?
Let me ask one question, just to not let you off the hook too easy. If you look back to 2010, 2010 to 2011, there was a $13 million increase. 2011 to 2012, there was a $51 million increase. When you say things look about the same, well, a same, the same then assumes close to $41 million increase next year if it was the same. So, is that kind of the context you're talking about?
Yeah, I would, I mean, there's-
A slight?
There's going to be a slight amount. I mean, because little things happen, you know? We, we're constantly going out to these businesses and places and businesses, so many of them we do on the income approach and it depends on what they've got going, that can go up or down really easily. Cap rates and all that can make those adjust. Just going to take a whole lot of houses to get built to, to make all that happen. So, when I, when I say flat, I don't mean absolutely flat, but I don't see us going in the negative. You know, we're, we're in the process of revamping some of our schedules for newer properties, newer homes especially. Main reason being that our schedules for, we've had them for a very long time, they fit real good for older homes, but as some of the newer construction and the new types of construction have come along, some of those things have kicked up a little bit that we're having a hard time keeping up with. So, we're going to adjust some of those. Now, the intent of that is not just go in there and bump a bunch of values up, it's just to give us a way to, where we've been having to make some properties fit into a schedule by making adjustments to it, we're going to have a separate schedule that we can go to that we won't have to make adjustments to. And we're not really expecting the value to change a whole lot.
Jerry, I know in years past, we've had some compliance issues that, that have been alleged. Maybe the way to say that, is everything running as far as you can tell the way it needs to be and are there things that we need to address or correct or work on from our end or you're indeed the one to make sure we are in compliance and following the state of Texas rules, procedures, et cetera?
As far as, as the appraisal district and its operations under the laws and the code, we're in good shape. We, we now undergo a MAPS audit, Methods and Assistance Program audit from the comptroller's office every two years. Our last one, we got through with all flying colors and we are in the midst of the, of the second one. And we got our preliminary report back the other day with some very minor things that they wanted to see corrections on that, let's just say right now, I disagree with. And we're trying to hash those out. I think we're in compliance there. They've got some little picky things that they think we may not be, but they're very, very minor. For, for instance, I will tell you one that just, we, every year, we get a financial audit. And in that financial audit, one of the items that gets put in the, in the audit is that we only have one accounting clerk, one accounting person in our office. And so, we get in the audit, a separation of duties write-up that says, you know, that we think that you, we should have this split out more. Well, we really don't have enough work to hire another person to take care of our accounting. One takes care of it. Now, the audit does state that it's not significant, there's nothing that they're finding that's anything there, but they're doing their job. They're saying, you know, you really should have these split up. And we've done a few things to put more paper across my desk that I check and see things to try and alleviate that. But the state looked at that and they said, "Oh, no, you have to make some sort of correction." Well, the board of directors, they acted on it. They said, "We think we're doing fine and we're going to leave it as is." But they're arguing with me over that one. So, it's that kind of stuff. It's nothing serious.
They nearly have to try to find something, don't they?
Yeah. You don't get off free.
That's the, the name of the game. Are we presently embroiled in any lawsuits about values, et cetera?
Well, we, not in the city of Steenville. We have Rough Creek Lodge that we've had a lawsuit on for a long time. It's down in the southern part of Ereth County that we're trying to get things settled on and it looks like we're going to wind up going to courthouse on that one. But in the city of Steenville, we had some, some hotels that we had some things on and stuff like that, but we've cleared all those up. All gone away.
Good, good. Well, sadly, that's part of your job to encourage compliance.
Yeah. And when it comes to us getting a lawsuit filed against us, we do everything we can to settle it. And nobody wins when you go to courthouse except the attorney. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Any other questions?
Thank you for working for us. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
What are the type of businesses that primarily use income basis versus value property value?
Your-
Rentals primarily?
Rental property, business, office property, apartments, anything that rents.
Lease-based primarily?
Anything that leases out.
Okay. Typically on a, on an income basis, what would be the difference in a, on income basis value versus, you know, the actual appraised value? What would be the income differences?
Well, when we do an appraisal on, on any of our commercial properties like that, we look at it from not only income, we look at the income market and cost as the three approaches to value. And we look at all three of those. Generally, your cost is the highest. And if you've got a market, that's the better one to use. But usually, for all of those kind of properties here in Steenville, we have a very limited market to be able to choose from. So, we go to income and that's where we-
And it's probably because duplexes and apartments don't sell very often, so they have an economy.
Right. Either that or when they do sell, there's confidentiality agreements and stuff like that and we don't ever get the sales price.
Or some type of other tax exchange kind of thing. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda. Do you want?
Go ahead and move that out.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the, the report? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Ms. Dannel to accept the Ereth County Appraisal District annual report. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. The report's accepted. We'll move on to the next agenda item now. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we've got an item to consider for rezoning the downtown district to B5 Restaurant Alcohol Beverage Service District and it's a property at 211 West McNeil Street. So, we can get the staff report from Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl and Ruby Stermer are the owners of this property and they are here for the public hearing. The property is located, as you said, at 211 West McNeil Street and the owners are requesting that the property be rezoned from the downtown district to the restaurant with alcoholic beverage service district. They propose to convert the 2,000-plus square foot building into a restaurant. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have in your packet, the staff report, if you have any questions. You have the area map and you also have an ordinance on page six, which would affect the zoning change following the public hearing if you concur. If you have any questions regarding the staff report, I'd be happy to answer those. And then, as I said, Mr. and Ms. Stermer are here.
Okay, any questions for Betty? Ms. Schleen?
The only question that keeps coming up for me is, and it's not necessarily mine, is people call and ask me, is about parking related to restaurants downtown. And the business district is one kind of parking restaurants, especially those serving alcohol, which is part of the rezoning request.
There, there is still a provision in our zoning ordinance that in the areas that used to be served by the old parking meters years ago, and this was one of the areas, that they are exempt because all of the buildings were built to the property line. So, so there will not be a parking requirement as there was not with the building on the corner of College and Bellknap, nor with the property that is zoned before where the rocking pea is.
Okay. With, where will the parking be for that? And what kind of occupancy is going to be in the building? Numbers as, like tables or customers?
Restaurants are based on one per 200 square foot of floor area in the building. So, you know, they, they're not required to have the parking, they will be able to use the on-street parking and any of the other public parking, just as the other businesses do.
Just, I have a, can I have a question for the chief, just out of curiosity about, about downtown? About the sales of alcohol downtown? Has that been an issue with us as far as arrests or other public issues downtown?
No more so than it has been with the other buses.
So, with the increase, us, us changing zoning, allowing zoning to change from downtown business to a restaurant where we can sell alcohol, that's not caused a difference in downtown disturbances or problems downtown?
Right now, I wouldn't be able to say that it would. But you've got to, with your client's health, you're going to a restaurant opposed to a bar.
Okay. Okay? Mr. K?
I have one question. Betty, would you review for me? How far does a place like this have to be from a church, a school?
They, the alcoholic beverage code, now, we do not have the requirement, but the alcoholic beverage code has within 200 feet.
Okay. And this is not within 200 feet of the Methodist Church?
No, sir.
Okay. Others?
If the First United Methodist Church, 140 South Columbia, which is right over here, is not within 200 feet of the applicant's property, why are they listed on our list of being within 200 feet?
That is their parking area.
Parking area.
Yes, sir.
So, it has to be door-to-door?
Yes. And that, like I said, that is not our reg, that is, yes, it is door-to-door. It is from, from front door of building to the street and then in, a long street right-of-way to the front door of the church. So, it would exceed that.
Okay, so it would be applicant's responsibility to know the distances to get their license from the T A B C.
Yes, that would, that will be part of their-
It's not our responsibility.
No, sir. That would be part of their T A B C review.
Any other questions?
Help me on my memory, is this the same property where we granted a sugarese month, a month or so ago to allow for a grease trap for the, for a kitchen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought that was the correct address. Thank you.
Others? Okay?
Thank you.
All right, this time, I'll open a public hearing for the, the property in, in question and would ask any individual that would like to come forward and speak in favor of the measure to do so. And just remind you to please limit your, your comments to three minutes and please state your name and address as you approach the podium. Does anyone care to do so?
My name is Carl Stermer. I'm a managing member of L T B D E LLC, which was, that owns the building, head 211 West McNeil. And if I'm a little nervous, you'll have to just bear with me. I'm speaking in favor, obviously. I wouldn't speak against it, it would be kind of silly, but I'm speaking kind of to, to give you an outline of the project as it, as it stands. My wife, Ruby, who's over there, she's been cooking food from scratch for over 40 years and she's a kind of a natural talent and if you don't believe me, you can ask her around. I think you'll find out that that's the case. She learned how to cook from her mother and her grandmother, which were both excellent cooks. And she's developed a whole series of recipes from that. Not only that, we lived abroad for a year in Switzerland. We lived above a five-star restaurant with a really nice chef. So, we got that added into it, plus we visited Italy and France and all the normal things you do if you live near. And restaurants were pretty much on our tour de force as we went through that because, obviously, you've got a cook over here who's interested in this. We also travel regularly to the Caribbean, Philippines, Indo-Pacific area. So, that kind of adds into it. And she's always looking for new taste flavors to combine together. In addition, she had a restaurant here earlier, before our son was born. It was about 17 years ago, it was down the street here. She had a really nice line of sandwiches and soups for lunch and I swear, people come up to her every week trying to get her to either give them the recipes or to come over and cook or, "Where are you doing, what are you, you know, what are you doing? Are you going to open again or what are you going to do?" "Well, we're going to open again." We've also added a dinner line to it and the recipes in the dinner line have been developed over, I'd say, at least the past 17 years. We've gone through stuff, well, you can tell. I end up as a guinea pig. This is, this is some really interesting stuff. I think everyone here will love it. Now, I can't guarantee this, but I feel very confident that everyone in this room will find something on that menu that they like, if not more than one. And if you don't, let me know because it, tell, I, trust me, it's going to be really interesting. Our goal has always been to create something new and exciting for the Steenville downtown area and a place for people to meet, enjoy great food and a great time. We, we truly want a place that people in town can brag about. They can actually come back and say, "You've got to go here." All we ask tonight from the city councils is that you treat us fairly with regard to zoning, like you've done with the other restaurants in the downtown area. And thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Quick question.
Can you share the name of the restaurant?
It's Ruby's Texas Bistro.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to run away. I didn't get off that easy.
Understanding that you're asking for a change in zoning to serve alcohol, do you feel like that's an absolute necessity for your restaurant to be successful?
I think it keeps us competitive. Yeah, I do believe it is an absolute necessity with the, the restaurants around the area. If we look around the restaurants that are downtown, I, I can't think of one that isn't in zone this way. And I think it would, it would put us at a disadvantage. We're opening a slightly larger place, not that much larger, but a slightly larger place than some of the others and it, it keeps us competitive. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, one, one more.
I've been in the building just recently because I used to take a lawnmower down there to get it fixed.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me what you're going to do to the building. I mean, that's in, I just went back to the back and looked at the tin roof and the concrete floor and stepped off the front and fell on the ground generally, getting off that sidewalk. So, what are you going to be doing to the building?
We have to meet the permitting requirements of the city. We will completely clean this place up. It will be, obviously, I'm not going to put a restaurant or my wife's not going to put a restaurant someplace that wouldn't be suitable for it. So, it'll be completely cleaned up, scrubbed, spiffed up. It will really look nice. It'll be a great asset, a great addition to the downtown area, I think. And yes, it was a, it was a lawnmower shop, but we can get that out of there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thanks.
Okay, any others wishing, wishing to speak for? Okay, anyone wishing to speak against the proposal? Okay, seeing none, I'll, at this time, close the public hearing and open up the, the item for discussion. Mr. Evans?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 2012-18.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Ms. Taylor to approve the recommendation, ordinance 2012-18 to rezone from downtown district to B5 Restaurant Alcohol Beverage Service District, Lot 1, Block 8, City Edition, located 211 West McNeil Street. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we've got ayes, Evans, Taylor, McDannell, Schleen, Cross, Kuhn, and nay from Nick's. Motion carries. Approval to rezone, as I stated before, from downtown district to B5, 211 West McNeil Okay, at this time, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is a public hearing on the tax rate for 2012. This is the first of two public hearings and at this time, I will open the public hearing to hear any comments from the public. Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing for the tax rate for 2012. And that, that concludes the first of two hearings on the tax rate. All right. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'd, I'd like to draw the council's attention to items six, seven, and eight. And Mr. Kaiser and I spoke about this earlier today. I, I would like to propose that we, we look at the fee schedule and the child safety fund items before we vote, vote on the budget because those two items feed into the overall budget approval. There's no difference in the content, it's just the order that, that we'll go, go through them. So, is anybody opposed to doing that? Okay. So, we'll, we'll look at and consider adopting the fee schedule, which is on page 16 through 27, and just let Mr. Kaiser, if he would, give us a brief summary of, of agenda item number seven, the fee schedule, please.
Excuse me, thank you. The only fees that are, were proposed during the budget work sessions and deliberations were a few of the development fees were increased, I believe, from $5 to $10 that were mentioned. We will have, and as far as just what I'm going to call routine fees, this is a complete listing of all fees to allow us to be able to share that with, with everyone. We do have proposed in this budget, a 10-cent increase in the volume charge on water and a 10-cent increase in the volume charge on sewer. And we will not, those will not go into effect until we have a further discussion and another vote, in essence, will happen in February, but those fee adjustments aren't here. And then, we do have reflecting it here, the proposed tax rate. Obviously, that will be a separate vote at that point in time. But this year, no, no significant changes in the fee schedule at this time. But it is the fees that are, support the revenue to pay for the expenditures you're about to pay for. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the fees.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I approve, I like the motion that we approve ordinance 2012. Is it going to be 19? Adopting the fee schedule as presented?
Second to motion, Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. McDannell to approve ordinance 2012-19, adopting the fee schedule as, as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It carries by unanimous vote to adopt ordinance 2012-19, adopting the fee schedule. We'll move on to item number eight on the agenda to consider approval of the child safety funds, which begin on page 28 of the agenda. And Mark, if you could give us a brief summary there.
A quick summary here, we are required to act on this separately by statute, very similar to hotel motel tax, to forfeit your funds. And these are allocated and funded in the special revenue fund. And so, again, that's why we're having this as a separate item. We generally, what this is, is on every citation for, moving citation for passing school buses inappropriately and/or any of the activity within a school zone, there's an additional $20 that's actually tacked on to the fine. There's another, another fine. twenty dollars that's actually tacked on to the fine, there's another, another fine, child safety funds, and they are restricted to certain pieces, which are outlined on page thirty, but it specifically really goes, it goes hand in hand with, and it says up here at the top, twenty dollars, school crossing guard programs, programs that design to enhance child safety, health, or nutrition, including abuse prevention intervention, drug and alcohol intervention. All of the applicants that we have here fall into one of those categories, and so, I will tell you that, that I recommend, and we've recommended, all of these be funded. Let me just tell you that we generate about seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars a year. We keep one year's worth in reserves, basically, to make sure we can still do it next year if, if we have a slow year or something, we don't issue as many citations, whatever you would want to call it. So, we just try to make sure we can be able to give them advanced notice if they're not going to get funded for a future year, is kind of the concept. So, we try to keep one year's funding in reserves. The total here of a little over ten thousand dollars is being proposed. I do want to kind of point out, one, one, Star Council, we've been funding them for quite some, sometime twenty-five hundred. The Stevenville Independent School District, I need to correct this, it's not Gilbert. Last year, we funded Gilbert, some security system at Gilbert, the application is actually for the high school, some security system changed at the high school, I do need to change that here in the memo, but again, it is some security systems there. And then, Cross Timbers Family Services. The new one that I want to just mention here, and our chief is a representative, was appointed representative to this, but E-Rath County recently joined the Palux River Children's Advocacy Center. It's in Hood County, Somerville County, I'm not sure what all counties are, are participating, but last year, September one of last year, E-Rath County was incorporated into the program, and our chief is a representative on there, and I'll just tell you that, again, they have submitted, and they're going to be participating in, in some form of, of a program to assist that falls in line with the spelled-out criteria. So, with that said, all the applications are in here, and we do just need a separate vote on it to, to allocate these funds appropriately. All of these are allocated directly into the budget document as, as was prepared, so hopefully, if, if you did have some direct questions about one of them, we maybe could have talked about it then as well, too, but, you know, we'll be glad to answer any questions. And I do not know much about the Palux River Child Advocacy Center, but we have a rep here.
Okay. Any questions for Mark?
I have some questions for, I guess, to be the chief, if he's going to be representative for the Palux River Children's Advocacy Center. Is that what you said, Mark? You can answer questions.
He'll try to, I don't know.
All right. You want to ask it, Mr.? Chief, you want to come to the podium, I guess? So, when we ask a question here on the Palux River Children's Advocacy Center?
Chief, in, in studying and preparing for this meeting, from the, this agenda item, I noticed that the Star Council, the School District, and Cross Timbers Family Services all listed their board of directors, but the Palux River didn't. And I was just wondering, is anybody from E-Rath County? Are you on the board?
I am on the board. The district attorney is on the board, and we have an accountant from BMY who is on the board as well.
Okay.
There are, there is about twenty-four people on the board of directors for the CAC.
Okay. And what makes this new Palux River Children's Advocacy Center unique is the forensic that they have to offer that our local agencies do not?
Right.
Okay. And do you know that the city of Granbury, Hood County, the city of Glen Rose, or Somerville County are also participating in funding this organization?
Yes, they are.
All of them are?
I, I know for sure Hood County is, and we just, we just had a meeting where, I know Hood County had provided funds, and I don't remember, but I believe Somerville County is as well.
Okay. And E-Rath County serves as an equal partner to these other counties?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the allocation of child safety funds as outlined in our agenda.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Kood, to approve the...
I'm sorry. I have a question for you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
I'm on the board for Star Council. Does that mean I need to abstain from this vote?
Do you get any money from them?
No.
You do not have to abstain.
Okay. All right.
All right. Good question.
I do not, I do not receive any of that.
Okay. So, it's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Kood, to approve the child safety funds as presented. Any discussion? All as in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously to approve the child safety funds as proposed.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Yes.
Quickly. If I understand what Mr. Kaiser said a while ago, we, we generate this, these funds at twenty dollars a ticket, and I just sat here and did the math on this, that's, that is, that is over forty tickets a month for passing a school bus. You know, that's a couple a day, and that's just the ones that are being called. You know, I'd really like to encourage people to pay attention to these school buses before we get some kid killed running past a school bus. It's really dangerous. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a great point. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay, let's, let's move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is back up to item number six, to consider what will be ordinance 2012-20, to adopt the annual budget for fiscal year beginning one October. And I'd ask Mr. Kaiser to please give us a brief synopsis.
Another quick summary, when I refer to budget, and the budget that you are approving, the number that is always referred to is, what are we projected to spend? And so, I would refer to it in those terms of what we've allocated funds and resources for, for this year. We have a twenty-six point four million dollar, and I've got all the sense, and I can give you the detail, but let me, if you don't mind, I'm going to use the million-dollar rounding for, for this discussion purposes, but twenty-six point four million dollars total projected expenditures for this next year. Of that, sixteen million dollars is for operational expenses, four, or three point two billion dollars is for debt service payments, that's basically all of our bond payments, that's principal and interest, and then approximately seven billion dollars for all of our capital projects. This does include a, a little over three hundred thousand dollars set aside for some pay adjustments, and then, I'd like to just briefly summarize the seven billion dollars in construction projects. We are currently under construction for the fire station. We also anticipate doing some street renovations to Dale Street, Alexander Road, and then, we also have, we anticipate trying to spend approximately a million dollars to make some significant improvements to our sewer, some of the sewer lines, and some of our sewer improvements. So, with that, I'm just going to kind of say that's the highlights of it, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions that citizens or y'all may have.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Sveen?
I've had a couple of accountants call and ask if, is there, what is, what is the, you mentioned debt service. Is there any ability to refinance debt at this point at a different rate than what we're paying now, or is the rate such that we're not going to get any better than that?
We, it, it's not economically feasible to do so because of our, the terms of our, of our notes, and I'll, I will say, I've asked, I asked back in January, I think, originally, and whenever we talk about our debt service and some of those things, we have such a short-term payback on the majority of our, of our debt, that we're at that point where either you just pay it off, or, you know, it's not worth paying the refinance fees, if you would, to do that. So, I have asked, and there's a couple of our, of our debts that we did lock in, again, it was with, with the bank, and, and we basically guaranteed that rate for their ten years. I will tell you that almost all of our debt now is at four percent or less, so I still believe we're getting very competitive rates in this environment. We've got very aggressive rates at that time, and most of the public offerings right now are going to be averaging about two eight, two three eight, is what, what we're really seeing, so we might be able to knock off a percent, but we're about to have some of these paid off. But I did look, thank you for asking.
Okay. Other questions?
Perhaps not a question, but a comment, Mayor, if I might?
Sure. Nick?
I, I think that Mark has done an outstanding job. Mark and the other staff members have done an outstanding job presenting the budget to us, that, that's going to be good for the city, I believe. I have an item that is in the, the budget, in the capital replacement and new program, and that is the one that I mentioned last time, the economic development director's position. It's my understanding that this is going to be funded from the general fund, basically by pulling that money from the capital improvement fund. It troubles me that we, we start a new program on, on the back of a budget that's pretty lean, and we've had requests from all the directors for increases in staff, and we've turned all of those down, and yet, we're creating a new position. It's probably not going to be very good for employee morale to, to look at that and say, "We're not going to give you a change in compensation, or more change in compensation, yet we're going to create a new job at a director's salary, or approximately that." And I know that this item is in the budget, but I, I believe that next week, when Ms. Taylor's committee discusses this, we need to come to some understandings on this and realize that though it, it may be in the budget, the program itself has not been approved yet, and until we vote to fill that position, it, it is not yet spent, and I think we need to carefully consider that, and carefully consider that, that amount of money, and where we might better use that for existing programs and/or existing employees' benefits, rather than create a new position. As I said, I think Mark's done a good job on the budget, it's my intention to support and vote for the budget, but this is something that we need to talk about next week when we have the opportunity to do so more fully.
Thank you. Any other comments?
May I, may I ask a question? Can we not take that out of the hotel motel tax? It cannot be used for economic development?
No, sir.
The tourism is economic development, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you've got to be very limited on what kind of economic development you're doing.
There are, there are five criteria, and the best way to say it is, it's to put heads, heads in beds.
Okay.
And it's about that simple.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, well, let me make a comment, Mr. Nick, and I don't want to rebut your comment, because the inclusion of the economic development position is something that I recommended during the budget process, and it is something that was supported by the council, which is why it's aligned, I'm in the budget today. We, you are right, this is very difficult economic times, and our budget is as lean as it hopefully will ever be, and I want to commend the city staff for the development of a budget that balances and does not raise taxes in a, in a, in an era where other cities are in dire straits and are, are failing. So, thank you. Economic development is a way to generate dollars, to give the citizens the programs that are required, it's a way to find dollars in the budget, to give pay increases to city employees. The return on investment of this position could be double-digit, and it has been in other locations, and though you mentioned the general fund, I, I will comment there that we have five hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars that are set aside for economic development within the general fund. The hundred thousand dollars that Mark is, is offered as a need includes thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars for startup costs for the position, because we're looking long-term for it to be, you know, sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year position, but that's still to be determined. So, these dollars are not competing against pay dollars, they're not competing against other general fund dollars, they're actually coming, as was Mr. Evans' recommendation in one of the, the meetings, to look at the economic development pot of money, because that's really where, where we're trying to generate a, a byproduct for this, this effort. So, we have got to find a way to grow ourselves out of this stalemate that our budget is in. We, we've reached the end of our rope, as, as we have all seen the last few weeks, as we've gone through this budget, there's no more room. There's very little room for capital improvement, there's, there's very little room for pay increases, there's, so we've got to find a way to generate income for this, this, this budget. And I feel very strongly, and there's been very, very positive response from within the community when I've talked about this economic development position from all aspects of the business community, from the retiree community, about the potential for this. Now, I'll grant you, we need to sort out the details about what, how the position will be executed within the city, and, and the personnel committee can, can look at that initially and bring it to the council, so we can, we can take action on, on the shape and, and format of this as we look toward the future. But this is, this is an exciting opportunity, yes, we, we still need to agree on some points, but I would just beg your, 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 your participation in the effort to realize the potential that it, that holds. So, I'll just stop there. Any other comments on the budget?
Mayor, will you accept the motion?
Yes, I will.
Mayor, I move approval of the annual budget for fiscal year 2012 to September thirtieth, 2013, as presented in our package.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nick, to approve ordinance number 2012-20, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, 2012, and ending September thirtieth, 2013. Any comments? Okay, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Okay, it's a unanimous vote, to approve the ordinance 2012-20, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2013. All right, and before we, we move on, let me just say a thank you to the council and to the, the city staff for the work that went into that, that vote. There were a lot of hours spent, a lot of discussion, and a lot of great professionalism on everybody's part to bring your perspective and, and your comments to what is a quality product, so, so thank you all very much. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, which is to consider approval of a request to, for a permit by CareFlight for emergency medical services. And, and Mark, do you want to give us a summary?
Yes, I had a visit from Mr. Jim Schwartz. He is president and chief operating officer for CareFlight Corporation. It's a nonprofit organization that has partnerships with all of the major medical facilities up in the metroplex area in particular, but our affiliation ties here with the Texas Health Resources, Stevenville Hospital. They have been requested, and really what it amounts to is the, the stress that's been put on the E-Rath County ambulance service to transport citizens, patients from the local hospital to the metroplex area, has put a stress on their equipment and/or manpower, and the hospital's been looking for some assistance in some way, and because of their partnerships and affiliation with CareFlight, CareFlight has agreed to put a land ambulance here, stationed at the hospital, be manned by their personnel. We do have the helicopters still coming in, but we're talking about an ambulance that will be stationed here, and under our, our ordinance, you know, they are required to file for a permit, it's twenty-five dollars. What it really does is it basically just makes sure we're aware of who's caring for the patients here locally, and then, also, is just making sure that we don't have any conflicts over competing territories, if you would. So, they will not be in competition with us or the county. The county is actually the one that has encouraged this action. Chris Lou with the hospital contacted me, and, as we've gone forward here, so, there's no competition with us. One, I guess you could say, two, they've paid their twenty-five dollars and are ready to be permitted, they'll have a, an ambulance here located very soon, and then, they will be available for backup on occasions, if you would, or mutual aid for both us and the county, if necessary, and, and they volunteered that. Most of the, I imagine, most of these personnel will be attended by one of our groups of employees, anyway. So, with that said, let me just, just let you know that, again, this is procedural in nature, the only reason why, the main reason why I'm here is, is I make sure that y'all are, are completely aware of the first-time applications. We've renewed all these, we've renewed any of the others that have come through here. We've renewed all these, we've renewed any of the others that have come through here. And we do that administratively, but because this was a, a new operation, I wanted just to make sure that everyone was aware of. They have followed the ordinance, and, and again, recommend that we grant them their permit to, to do so, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Go ahead and ask any questions.
One quick question. Do we, and maybe Chief, there you are. Mark, you mentioned the mutual aid. Will there be a need for a, a formal agreement between the two on how responses, when a call comes in, who, who gets the?
The, the ordinance itself states that, that we help, we're first out or the county's first out, and that they can open an emergency if they're called by us to do so. So it is stated in the order.
It, it, it's basically stated in the ordinance such, we get, you know, we're first right of refusal, if you would, counties with their territories, and, and it proceeds from there. But again, they've offered to, and asked us just to be that backup.
Okay. And then a second question.
I don't, I don't foresee a need of it. I think the ordinance covers that.
Right. And then a second question, and I think this is a real positive of this, is that this will provide the ability for transport to locations like Weatherford or, or the metroplex for medical, for specific medical response that we might not otherwise be able to provide today, that would keep our asset here, while they could transport to a specialist.
Yes, we don't do that now, but the county does, and that will enable the county to keep their stuff at home.
Okay.
And be able to handle the county better and put people on the road.
All right.
And it will also give the people there in this hospital a more timely ride to the, to the next station.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, consider a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Kood has made a motion and seconded by Mr. Nix to approve the request for permit by CareFlight for emergency medical services. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, the motion carries to approve the request for permit for CareFlight. Right now, we'll move on to the consent, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda with correction on page 64. I'm not sure what word that is, but it's circled in our, in our book.
In its entirety, Joe?
In its entirety.
I would say that.
I want to make notice of the fact that we've got that motion from Mr. Kood.
Doesn't happen often.
Really, I don't, because it was already circled.
Did you get the motion?
Make sure the minutes reflect that Mr. Kood made a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
In its entirety.
In its entirety.
And in its entirety.
It's the full thing.
Wow, Leo.
And seconded by everybody.
I want to recognize Dr. Kood.
Any discussion? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. All right, next item, comments from Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you. I, I really would like to just do one thing this evening, and then answer questions. But this time of year, just for everybody's purposes, this is the time of year where we really have completed our, really our, our busy season, which is during the summer months with a lot of projects. And for all those project, projects to occur requires a lot of planning and a lot of those other things, which we will begin initiating for this next year. But I just want to let you know that, and I say a special thank you to all the employees, because I know how stressful and time-consuming and hot it was this summer in performing their functions and duties. And again, I just, I very much appreciate all that's done, and I just know, remind you that, that again, they're really coming off the tail end of their busiest season and busiest time of the year. So I really want to appreciate that. I'm saying that because there's a couple of, this doesn't happen very often, so I really want to give recognition, you know, and it was brought to my attention, going to church the other day, when water was spewing over two stories high in, in downtown. You know, we've got the folks that were out there, they were right on it. I went by after church, and they were, all three of them were soaking wet, doing what they had to, to, to make sure we take care of everything. But in particular, I want to thank Mrs. Bunce, B-U-N-C-E, for sending us a cake. The water department doesn't get recognized and thanked very often. And I'm just going to say, Mrs. Bunce, thank you for sending a cake to the water employees and for recognizing their work, because, again, we do appreciate it. Many of the employees, I, I can tell you, it happens a lot in the fire department, the police department, and some of the other areas. But I'm, I'm not so sure, this is not my first to see a cake be given to the water department. So I just thank you, Mrs. Bunce. And again, I, I appreciate your recognition of their hard work during these times. I'll just call your attention on, on the list here. We, we are going to start aggressively in making sure that all of our committees start meeting. This is the time of year that we start planning to, to be prepared. So just notice the committee meeting set up here at the bottom of page 97, and we'll, we'll be getting started. I did not get a chance to talk to Dr. Cross, which is the chair of the nominations committee, but I will tell you that the nominations committee will be meeting next week, and specifically on their agenda is beginning to develop a legislative agenda. The legislative agenda of Mr. Cross, Dr. Cross referred to it a couple of meetings ago, that this is the time of year we need to discuss that. Let me just explain to you that TML creates a, a listing of, of items that they support, and will be encouraging cities to participate in and watch for and, and play in the legislative process. But in particular, the question now is, or for next week, and I just need you to be thinking about it between now and next week, so that you're not hit cold. But if there is something of, of specific item that you feel that we need to be taking action on, we, there's some procedural aspects we need to be sure that we get involved in. And so if there is something, I can tell you, you know, most years, we don't have anything. We just really start piggybacking on TML's, some of their items. We will get that when we go to the TML conference in late, late October, 1st and November. But until then, if there's something that y'all have on your minds, or that you hear from the citizens that we need to aggressively participate in, please bring those ideas to next week's committee meeting for Dr. Cross. And so just a little bit of a heads up for that. Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions at this point.
Any questions for Mark?
I have a question.
Okay.
Mark, was the Personnel Committee renamed the Human Resource Committee?
It's all one and the same. I don't know, maybe I, I, I don't know.
Hey, I was just wondering.
I didn't have it on there, and so I just typed it.
Written as the Human Resource Committee before, so.
Sometimes referred to as politically correct in my world, and so I had, I use both, so I must have, I'm sorry.
You are.
Congratulations.
So did you approve that, Mark?
I was fine.
Hey, you've got two committees.
Got their committees.
All right. Human Resources. Other questions for Mark? Okay, thanks, Mark. Let me see if there's any comments by council members. Mr. Kood? Dr. Cross?
No.
All is well on Long Street, if you don't trip my house and break a leg.
Yeah, I was given, Scott, a, a warning earlier that I hope I don't hurt myself getting dance lessons from his, his wife, Sheri. My wife and I are going to be preparing for the big competition.
Well, the Taylors are dancing in it as well, so I think we could, you know, work up kind of a council, you know, contest.
There you go.
We'll prove the competition, big brothers, big sisters, if you like.
They're, they're probably like that. They would. And that, that competition's coming up in November, so we can look forward to that. Okay, let me, let me conclude with just a couple of comments here quickly, and I'm going to reiterate myself for a minute, but I'm going to do so because I, I feel it's necessary. I, I want to really sincerely thank the city staff, Mark your leadership of them, and then the council in the preparation of this budget. It was tough, tough decisions, a lot of great discussion that has led to a plan that it's going to be good for the city, and we just look forward to, to the coming year. I will also share with you and just put into context your comment about the feeling this time of year, having worked many fiscal year budgets. This is the equivalent of the feeling that, that people have between Christmas and New Year's, where you have worked, 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 and then there's, there's just a law, a brief one, to, to kind of reflect on all that's been accomplished. And, and the city employees and staff, you've done a phenomenal job. So, you know, 30 September is New Year's Eve, so you can say Happy New Year on one October, and, and hopefully y'all will have, have a celebration that night to just, for, for all that you've accomplished this, this past year. And to thank that on 4 September, it's still hitting triple digits, those that are out in the heat are really earning, you know, extra for, for their efforts. So thank you very much. I also want to say that, and to use a football analogy, you know, you, you hear of teams that win championships, and I, I feel like that, that we as a team have, have come together and, and have, have achieved a victory. But one of the bittersweetnesses about a season is that the day the championship is over, the new season begins the next day. And so it, it is, it is very critical for us in these next few meetings, as we look to develop a strategy for next year, that we come to that with an energy and an excitement and a realization that, that there are some, that there are some things that we're going to need to put in, put in motion that can then make us successful to, for the coming year. The strategic planning effort that, that is rolling out next week, Mark and I are going to make a short presentation about that, and then the committees will spend the October, November timeframe, really putting together committee strategies that will then lend themselves to a January overall strategic planning effort that, that we will hopefully execute. Now, when, when I talk about strategic planning, I'm not using that term in the sense of central planning. This is not a central planning effort. No, this is the idea of taking a planning process to apply an annual program to a multi-year context. And that's really important to understand as we move into this. We, we need to have a strong strategy for next year, but that strategy needs to be in context of a long view, which is four, five, or 10 years. And that, that way, we can set goals like buying down a pay deficit, or creating a strategy to, to buy down a backlog in, in water or sewer lines. And the multi-year aspect of this will be very important as we move forward, and so I'm really looking forward to that as we develop fiscal strategies to that. The other aspect of, of this is to come up with new ideas and new strategies to deal with physically constrained environments. We've talked a little bit in council meetings about things like tax increment financing. That is a strategy that we will really need to roll up our sleeves and understand, does this benefit Stevensville, or does it not? If it does, there are mechanisms already in place for us to proceed forward, but the how is, is something that we together need to investigate and understand as we move forward. But ideas like that are things that we need to, we need to really investigate and understand as we move forward. And then there are other items that we hope to partner with, Torleton and the county downtown revitalization, for example, where there is equity of all three, not just the city. Yeah, it's the city's downtown, but there's participation and, and equity by Torleton, the county, and, and the city in, in a downtown revitalization plan. And so I'll look forward to discussions in that area as well, and really excited about the, the coming fiscal year and all that we're going to achieve. The community has a tremendous momentum. You know, Jerry, in his, in his comments about the economy, said that he doesn't see flat, he doesn't see decline. I think Stevensville's going to continue to grow. It's poised to be successful, and that, you just get the sense of it around the community. And I think that positive attitude is going to carry the city champions well into next year. So I'd just like to thank everyone again, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I thought of something I wanted to share.
All right.
I just wanted to remind all the folks out there watching tonight that September 28th and 30th, mark it on your calendar, the E. Rath County Livestock Association has a pro rodeo at the Lone Star Arena. It'd be a great thing to bring your families to, and the kids will love it. September 28th through the 30th.
Okay, thanks. That's a great reminder. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Move and second it. Meetings adjourned.